Uh, Councilman Smith, can you hear me?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, Council Stevenson?
Yeah.
Um, okay, are you, I'm gonna take you off of my phone.
Yeah, I can hear you on the phone.
Oh, okay, are you able to hear me on the computer?
Let me get off the phone.
Okay.
She has unmuted herself.
Okay, so we have a quorum.
Everybody ready? Mic check? Everybody ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening all.
Can you hear me councillor?
Yes, the screen had went blank for a hot second.
Okay. Yeah.
Welcome.
Is Tim on?
Can you see him? Everybody's in? Ready to go?
Anytime, oh yeah.
Welcome to the Tuesday, April 7th, 2020 edition of the East Cleveland Regular Council Meeting, City Council Meeting, the time is six?
Six fifty-one.
Six fifty-one. Regular City Councilmen of the great city of East Cleveland is now called to order. Dr. Guy, may you call the role please from virtual teleconference.
We have Councillor Stevenson.
Present.
Councillor Austin.
Present.
Councillor Martin is attempting to get online, um, he is excused at the moment. Uh, Councillor Gaudi, I'm not sure if anybody heard from her.
She sent an email, she says she had death in her family.
Okay, okay, so she will be excused. Uh, we have Law Director Willow Hemmons, present.
Yes.
Finance Director Charles Ianhin, present. I think that's it. And our Mayor King is there somewhere, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, uh. Due to the unfortunate nature, the unfortunate circumstances of the coronavirus, we come to you today via a virtual teleconference, and we thank you all for your patience. We have no remarks of the public. I got, we move to minutes to be approved.
Councillor, we do have a couple of residents that popped in. I saw Justin Anderson, and I don't know who the other individual is.
Thank you, Dr. Guy, so do we have any remarks from the public? Unique situation, so I'll give a few seconds. Speaking of our public, I really thank, uh, any public for tuning in. Okay, here in love, we move on, please, Dr. Guy, minutes to be approved.
There we have, uh, you all received this some weeks ago.
Yes.
So, um, the first one is the February 27th Agenda Review. Uh, March 3rd, Regular Council. The March 5th, Contracts and Property, and the March 10th, Health and Safety, and the March 10th, Finance.
We, I'm gonna, we're gonna do them, um, one at a time. I have a motion to accept the February 27th Agenda Review. We have a second.
I can't hear.
Can you hear? Do we have a fir-, uh, motion, second motion for the February 27th meeting minutes?
I can't hear.
No?
We got a mo-, do we have a motion?
We get a second? Councillor Austin?
I made a motion.
I can't hear him.
Okay, he said, okay. Okay, Councillor Austin.
Yeah.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yay.
Councillor Smith.
Yay.
And we have those minutes approved.
Thank you. Next, we move to reports and announcements from Mayor Brandon L. King. Mayor King?
If you have some more minutes to go.
Yes, we can, Dr. Guy?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna go through the rest of the minutes, one at a time, please.
Yeah. Okay, you got the March 3rd Regular Council.
I move that we accept the March 3rd Regular Council Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Hey, Councillor Austin. Councillor Stevenson.
Yay.
Councillor Smith.
Yay.
Hey, March 3rd is approved, have the March 5th Contracts and Property. There's a motion by Austin.
I'll second it.
Hey, Councillor Austin. Councillor Stevenson.
Yay.
And Councillor Smith.
Yay.
Okay, March 5th is approved, have the March 10th Health and Safety. Okay, we got a, a motion by Austin, the second motion.
Second.
Okay, Councillor Austin.
Yeah.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yay.
And Councillor Smith.
Yay.
Okay, lastly, it's the Finance. Motion.
I move to accept the Finance Committee Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Second, Austin. Councillor Stevenson.
Yay.
Councillor Austin.
Yay.
And Councillor Smith.
Yay.
Okay. All right, all minutes approved.
Thank you very much. Next, we move reports and announcements from Mayor Brandon L. King.
Thank you, Colonel President, I'll just turn you this way a little bit. Hello, East Cleveland, hello everybody. Thank you for, uh, tuning in. Sure, most of you are up to speed on what's going on with the COVID-19 or coronavirus and the pandemic that's facing not just the US but global. Uh, remind you, for your updates, please check the coronavirus. That Ohio.gov, that's the Ohio Department of Health, or the CDC.gov for the coronavirus nineteen. Those are the websites that have the updates on them. Uh, understand the symptoms and know your precautions as we go through them time and time again, to help stop the spread. Wash your hands often, cough into your elbow or your shoulder. Don't touch your face at all, unless you just washed it, stay three to six feet apart. And if you feel sick, please, stay at home. Over the last week or so, we've been on a number of conference calls with the Governor, with the County Exec, one or two Senators, and Congresspeople alike, uh, to help understand this coronavirus and a different federal relief that will be coming our way. Stay tuned for that. As an additional precaution, here in the city, we have already limited access to City Hall and function of City Hall. The next four weeks, are considered a time period when the pandemic will be at its height, so far as the spread. So, beginning next week, we will further restrict access, not just of residents and people coming into business, but also employees. So, City Hall, we pretty much, with the exception of the court, we pretty much shut down. In one of the calls, particularly that with the Governor and with the County Exec, it's been noted how revenue overall will be hurt. The number that has been thrown out is a forty percent reduction to the state, which translates into a forty percent reduction here locally. We're guestimating right now, because they're all guestimates, anywhere from five hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand dollar hit to what's already been appropriated for 2020. And again, that's because of the local government sales tax. Remember the fuel tax that was just, uh, increased? Nobody's traveling, for those of you who have been at a gas station, we're at a, maybe a ten-year low on gas, maybe better. So, stay tuned for that. And, you know, while I'm there, I just put this out, we can, we can talk about it later. I know council has been requesting, uh, an assistant Deputy Clerk. With this shortfall, we know that a shortfall is coming, we're just not sure what it will be. All we can do is ask that council, you know, maybe put it on hold, maybe rethink it. It's always councils prerogative, uh, as to the finances, but uh, remember, we're under a fiscal emergency, and we're still not sure what the fiscal oversight would say if we went to them, but just be mindful of that. Okay, moving on, State and the City has been postponed, we are, we have scheduled another Tele Town Hall, that will be next Thursday, 4:16 at 5:00 PM. So again, that's not this Thursday, but the following week's Thursday, 4:16 at 5:00 PM. For those of you who wish to join and weren't on the last one, please call my office and leave your number, and we can put that into the robo-call so that you get notified of, of when that will happen. We will talk about, uh, relationships and some of the benefits that we're looking, particularly with the county. Uh, we will talk about further things that we've talked with, with the County Exec and our County Rep Cheryl Stevens, as Lee Rowe is still scheduled to go. We did actually get another grant, uh, per our County Councilwoman. And I'll give updates on City Services, as you know, uh, we're starting to do a lot of the, uh, neighborhood groups demos, streetlights, grass cutting is one or two weeks away, so I want to update that as well. We have, uh, in conjunction with the Cleveland Food Bank and with our local Salvation Army, we have been running around the city, making food deliveries to our residents, particularly those, uh, residents in the high-rises that are pretty much, uh, shut in the high-rises, they can't, can't even get out. We've guesstimate that we've delivered to over four hundred households. And we'd like to thank the volunteers and the staff that have showed up. Particularly like to thank our President, our Council President, Ernest Smith, Vice President, who actually showed up, thank you so much, Ms. Stevens. And of course, our Councilman Tim Austin, who was out in front of this maybe a month ago, like, hey Mayor, we gotta do something. So, thanks for helping pushing it and then showing up to make sure that it happened effectively. We have been delivering food this week, and next week, we will be doing another food drop from the Cleveland Food Bank. Anyone who's interested in volunteering, please call my office, call me, call the Chief of Staff. We will need help next Tuesday, we'll get another twelve thousand pounds. We have beefed up the County Ready Notify, we're up to about five hundred members, uh, City Members. That leaves roughly sixteen thousand five hundred that we need to sign up out of all our residents, so that the county can keep you up to speed with different emergencies, natural disasters, this pandemic, please, please sign up for that. That? Oh, I do have one other thing, so today I was notified that there have been a number of public records requests, and I talked briefly last month, or last meeting, about the newspaper that basically doing the city a disservice, a lot of, of fake news, innuendos. And we have begun our legal process in order to address people who advertise, people who write, people who produce, people who promote and distribute this newspaper. What they requested is information regarding city vehicles. So, Fire Chief drives a city vehicle, the Police Chief drives a city vehicle, I drive a city vehicle as the Safety Director, Council President drives a city vehicle. These are all city vehicles, we do not own these vehicles. So I'm not sure what they're after in asking for this information, but we do not own any of these vehicles. These vehicles will be here long after we are gone. As a number of the vehicles that are currently being driven have been here through previous administrations. So just wanted to make you aware of that, I'll talk more about that at the Tele Town Hall. And we have filed, uh, legal, legal work with the legal process to, to put an end to this nonsense. But Council President, that concludes my report, there's no questions or concerns.
Next, Dr. Guy, we move on to receipts of communication.
Um, as of last week, we have not received any communications in the office.
Thank you very much. Reports from Council Committees, Contracts and Property, Councilman Tim Austin.
See, we can. This is volume, can everybody hear him?
Nope, I can't hear him.
Councillor Austin, your volume is, is low.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Great, thank you. Due to COVID-19 and the limited access to the City Hall, and now we have established a way by which we can actually communicate the residents, or communicate the message to our residents, the Contracts and Property Meeting has been rescheduled again to 16 April, 2020, via teleconference, so more to follow once the information is published. And that is all I have for Contracts and Property at this time. Seven two questions or concern.
Thank you, Councilman Austin. Health and Safety, next meeting is scheduled via teleconference, Tuesday, April 14th, at five thirty, at six thirty. Six thirty PM. Next Finance Committee meeting, which I chair, scheduled for six thirty, Tuesday, April 14th, via teleconference.
Um, that, Councillor, that's a correction on the Health and Safety, it should be five thirty.
Five thirty for Health and Safety. Thank you, Dr. Guy. Six thirty for Finance Committee. General Services, Council Vice President.
Um, with regard to, uh, the General Services and Administration meeting, the meetings are being suspended until we come out of this shelter-in-place situation with the coronavirus.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The next Personnel Appointments Meeting is scheduled for six thirty, Tuesday, April 28th, with Councilwoman Gaudi. Next Agenda Review Meeting is scheduled for six thirty, Thursday, April 16th. And the next Regular Council Meeting is scheduled for six thirty, April 21st, Tuesday. Um, again, we apologize for the, uh, inconvenience, any inconvenience or situation, please bear with us. Dr. Guy, thank you, next we move to Proclamations.
No proclamations.
Thank you.
We didn't, can, I got a question.
Yes, Council Vice President.
We were supposed to send a proclamation, I thought, to Gladys Walcott, whose mother passed. Um, and I believe the funeral was on Saturday.
Yeah, I didn't, um, I didn't get any of it.
Dr. Guy, I didn't, I, um, spoke to Belinda about it, maybe she forgot. You were out.
Okay.
And we were down at the, um,
Wow.
Civic Center. So, if we didn't send it, can we move to send it?
Absolutely. Yeah, I just need information, um, obituary or something.
Yes, we have, yes.
Absolutely.
Do we have the obituary, or do we need to?
Yeah, we need an obituary.
I, I, I will, uh, put it on myself to contact Ms. Walcott to, tonight. To see if we can get, get that, get that information, if that's all right with my colleague.
That's fine, as long as we do it.
Okay. Next, we move on to bids.
We have the, um, Annual Salt Bid, um, Legislation, which you all are gonna be discussing tonight. I didn't know if the, the Mayor had anything additional to say prior to us going into the legislation.
I'm not sure when the next Property and Contracts Meeting is, but I'll, I'll put that out now. Is that we're looking to extend a number of contracts that were expiring this year, in particular, the Rumpke Contract. It is set to expire, and the, uh, federal government, as part of their relief packages, has issued language that allows all contracts to be extended for a year. And that is going to be the best avenue for us, just extend contracts, because for those of you who have been out in the business world, not much business going on right now. It's at a standstill, and they say over the next month, it's gonna come to a complete halt. So, that's just a preview for the next Pro-, Property and Contracts Meeting, and that's all I had for that.
Next, we have Legislation. So.
Okay. First is our Ordinance Number 07-20, as an emergency, an ordinance, an acting, uncodified regulations with respect to public meetings in order to respond to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic and declaring an emergency. Uh, requested by City Council President Ernest Smith, and sponsored by Council as a whole.
Yes, I will ask my colleagues for a motion to, uh, change Ordinance Number 07-20, um, change it from an emergency to a, to a regular legislation, and it need be, we could change it back at, at another time.
I move that we change the Public Meeting Ordinance 07-20 from an emergency to a regular submission on the agenda.
You got a second motion?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Councillor, uh, Stevenson?
Yay.
Councillor Austin?
Yeah.
And Councillor Smith?
Yay.
Okay, Ordinance Number 07-20, um, has been changed from an emergency.
This is just a small, um, discussion, uh, reason for Ordinance Number 07-20 is very, very important to keep our colleagues safe, as keep our colleagues safe, so our colleagues can serve to help interest rights and needs of the people.
Council, Councilman is going to the, um, the, um, Committees, or one of the Committees?
Yeah, we can, it can be more.
Or first read.
Yes, it, um, it goes right here, straight to a first read, Dr. Guy.
Okay.
Yes, just the first read right here.
Well, you want to make it a first read, or you said a regular submission, so that would be going back to Committee as a regular submission, so, but I just need to know if you're changing it to the first read, or?
Right, yes, yeah, uh, yes, it can be edited, please.
Dr. Guy, I want to make them, I want to amend the motion on the floor, um, so that we can actually make this a first read.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the initial motion, so that Ordinance Number 0720 can reflect as a first read, starting right now.
Okay. Second?
I second.
Hey, Councillor Austin?
Yay.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yay.
And Councillor Smith?
Yay.
Okay, Ordinance Number 07-20 is now a first read.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Resolution Number, wait a minute, I got mine. I think I have my, um, Resolution, I'm sorry, Ordinance Number 08-20, an ordinance amending Section 351.18C of the East Cleveland Codified Ordinance by adding Section 351.18C1 to include certain streets, as well as the Forest Hills Park grass areas and city-owned parking lots to the city's on-street parking sticker program during the Shaw High School All-Class Reunion Event, requested by Mayor Brandon L. King, and sponsored by Ernest L. Smith, Council President.
Thank you, Dr. Guy, it's a first read, um, I'm pretty sure that our great Mayor will supplies with the streets, um, just the grass areas. More information and more conversation will come.
Can I, um, I'm not, I'm not fully understanding this. Um, the grass area, what are we talking about? What, I'm, I'm not clear on this.
So yes, that's a, a great question, so what, what's happening at the all-class reunions? I'm not sure if you've ever been to an all-class reunion.
No, I have not.
Okay, there, there simply aren't enough places to park. So one of the things we've been talking about, even before I was an elected official, is if the city could accommodate parking at the park behind the tennis courts, right? Or in front of the tennis courts at the asphalt pavement. The city could charge a nominal fee to help cover some of the costs of that weekend. So that is what this legislation seeks, um, to move forward to. For those of you who have been over the last couple of years, a lot of the residents up there are charging twenty dollars to park on the grass. That's how desperate people are for parking. Keep in mind, when it's at its height, you easily have four thousand people in this park. That's just how, how this event has grown, and we need, as a city, to come up with a way to kind of offset what we spend, uh, cleaning up the park and prepping the park, and that, that's what this is, is designed to do. That's all.
Any other, uh, questions? Thank you, Council Vice President, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Guy, move on, please.
Okay.
Yes, do you hear me, Dr. Guy, this is Willow Hemmons?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, as the Mayor mentioned, uh, today we found out that we are facing a forty percent cut in our local government funds and in our other, uh, revenues, and therefore, at this time, the administration would like to withdraw Ordinance Number 09-2O because of the uncertainty with regard to our revenues for the remainder of the year. Uh, Mayor, would you like to expound on that?
Thank you, Law Director. As, as we are simply not sure, as most of municipalities, county, and the state government, the hit that everyone's gonna take regarding this pandemic, we'd like to get out in front of the curb here, if we can, to minimize the impact of, of what, what's to come. So, but it's just a guesstimate, uh, five hundred to eight hundred thousand off of our current appropriations, it's just a guesstimate. It's just a guesstimate, but it's a safe guess, a, a safe bet at this point, so that, that's what this is about, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Madam Law Director. Shall we move on?
Okay, um, we're at ordinance number ten dash twenty, an ordinance requiring store owners or operators in the city of East Cleveland to limit customers to five persons at a time during the COVID-19, should be nineteen, coronavirus pandemic and declaring an emergency, requested by, uh, Ernest L. Smith, Council President, sponsored by Ernest L. Smith, uh, Council President Corinne Stevenson, Council Vice President.
And I have, may I, I'd like to ask for a motion to change ordinance number ten dash twenty from an emergency to a first read.
Was that Austin?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
I second.
Okay, Councilor Austin?
Yay.
Councilor Stevenson?
Yay.
Councilor Smith?
Yay. Um, brief discussion. First of all, I want to thank, uh, Council Vice President for sponsoring this legislation, uh, with me. I want to, uh, Madam Law Director, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So, I, I, doing a little research, I understand that there's a certain amount of s- square feet that the fire department, um, requires, and, um, even though we don't have a big Walmart store here, we do have a few, uh, a few, uh, medium-sized stores, so I would like to change this, if possible, from five people to, uh, find out what the square feet is, um, of the building, of, of, of each building. I, I want to change it to a certain amount of people per square foot per building. And also, I want to add on, um, so good, uh, so some good parts that my colleague, Council Vice President Stevenson had as far as, uh, cleanliness and sanitation and the, and all essential businesses, um, that's still open. So, um, if possible, we would like to, uh, edit that and, and add that part.
I understand, just send me the information, and, uh, I will, um.
Yes, Madam Council Vice President, would you be able to send Madam Law Director, uh, your part of the, of the information?
Yeah, I can send it to her. I said, uh, Dr. Guy, did you get the information? I sent it to you earlier.
Today?
Yes.
Okay, I'll check in, and, uh.
Yeah, I can send it to, um.
Dr. Guy, did you hear that, that very, that very great word?
Are you talking to me?
Uh, I was talking, uh, everybody, uh, that, that great word, Councilor Austin would like to also sponsor, co-sponsor it. Thanks.
Councilman Austin is co-sponsoring also.
And, uh, to the people of East Cleveland, this, this is just in the efforts to assure our health and safety through these, um, hard times, hard times. We must, as our mayor stated, we, we must stay three to six feet away from each other. We makes, must take precautions, um, extreme precautions in this, in this, in, in this time. Extreme precautions in this time. We know that most businesses are doing the right thing. Again, most businesses are doing the right thing. We have a, um, obligation, as your elected officials, to watch out for your health, interests, rights, and needs, and this is a, an, an effort to do so. So we really thank you all, and I really thank my colleague.
Ready to move on?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, we have resolution number ten dash twenty, a resolution agreeing to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation's ODOT annual winter road sought bid for the 2020 to 2021 year, in accordance with the Ohio revised code five five one three point zero one B, and hereby agrees to all of the following terms and conditions in its participation of the ODOT winter road sought contract, requested by Mayor Brandon L. King, sponsored by Ernest L. Smith, Vice, uh, Council President, and Corinne Stevenson, Council Vice President.
Also Timothy R. Austin. Austin with that large, uh, any comments?
Our deadline is April twenty fourth.
Is that in here? You said April twenty fourth?
Yes, it's in the supplemental documentation.
I see it, okay, yes, it's in, it's in the. Can't hear you, uh, Councilman.
For the city to save money by buying and bulk and partnering with other municipalities, and, uh, having exercised the economy of scale for our benefit in the future.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we move on to remarks and requests of the public. Three minutes.
Yes, can, uh, y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, Justin Anderson, uh, one four four three six terrace wrote, um, first I'll start by, uh, addressing the mayor's, um, comments about the legal process that they started, and I want you to know about our legal process too. First of all, if you heard of freedom of speech, you'll understand that this paper is doing just that. Secondly, to sue somebody for something like this, I want you to remember the words recklessly regard for the truth. Nothing in that paper that you address is recklessly regarding the truth. Did the mayor allow ODOT to take down lights on Euclid Avenue? Yes, he did. Um, let's see, what else can we address? Um, did Timothy Austin get his house for a thousand dollars? Per the Cuyahoga County website, yes, he did. Now, if he lied to them and told them a different price, or he really got it for a different price, well, he shouldn't be lying to the county then. Did you get the house on Oak Hill for a thousand dollars? Yes, you did. So, I could go on every line in the newspapers, and all of it is from public records. So recklessly regarding for the truth, that's false. Nobody's just lying on someone recklessly. I'm only going by public records, Mrs. Gowdy, whose paper it is, is only going by public records. And I want you to know who our attorney is, if you want to come, Robert DiChillo. So if you want to come and try to sue, just know a counter suit for frivolous, uh, lawsuits will be coming back from our attorney, Mr. DiChillo, and I don't think you want to meet him in court. Now, we'll go on to the next issue. Cars, we're talking about cars. The public records request was made from cars, he said, and the city owns them? Yeah, but we don't have to get no big old luxury cars, just gas guzzlers like we are the President of the United States. What's wrong with a little Hyundai Sonata or Toyota Camry, a small car? So it's not about, oh, we own the cars still. Well, yeah, but instead of spending almost fifty thousand dollars on a car, we could have spent twenty and saved thirty. So, no, it's not about who owns the cars. Uh, also, the new code for this, uh, meeting, I didn't know about this, uh, the login stuff for this meeting, they sent the new code, uh, minutes, like thirty minutes or so before, which I'm glad the councilwoman let me know what that code was, but I had an old code, and that wasn't working, and I know it's some technical difficulties, so hopefully we could get that, uh, together. And that parking on the streets, I'm telling you, that's gonna cause outrage. So whoever wants to sponsor it, that will be in the next newspaper. I saw that Corinne Stevenson sponsored it, I believe, and Count, and, and President Ernest Smith. Um, I wouldn't do that if I was you guys, I don't think that that's smart to do. Um, they already were mad when he stopped letting them stand in the streets. I can only imagine how they're gonna feel when they find out he wants them to pay on side, wants people to pay on side streets. So per what I saw, Councilwoman, Vice President Stevenson, and Council President Ernest Smith is sponsoring that. I will be writing about that in the next newspaper. Um, if, if that isn't true, please reach out to me, and I'll be able to take your pictures and, and take you out of the article that's coming up. I'll try to reach out to get some statements, but I think that is crazy, and I think, um, you know, that, that needs to be thought through a little longer, and, um.
That's your time.
Robert DiChillo will be.
That's your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anyone else? Thank you. We now have responsive council and mayor to remarks of the public. Mr. Mayor?
Five minutes.
One of the things I forgot to mention earlier, and I know I mentioned this at the last meeting, and some of the measures that the city would be taking to help, uh, keep workers safe and anyone coming in the city hall. You can see in my hand is the infrared temperature reader. So you, it doesn't have to touch your forehead, you just put it that, about that close, you push the button, and although ours is not colored, it tells you on here what the readings mean, whether or not you have a, a fever, a low fever, or a normal temperature. So, anyone who comes in the building, and all employees must be tested for their temperature, and per federal-state guidelines, the employer has the authority to test anyone coming in the building. And again, it's just to keep everyone safe. So we finally got these in, I believe they came in, uh, Monday, uh, or Friday, and we distributed them to the departments, fire, and police, so that everyone, uh, employees and people in every building could be, and will be, uh, tested for their temperature. Again, health and safety, keep us, keep us moving along. That concludes my report, unless there's any questions or concerns of me, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Vice President?
Is this the, uh, is this the correct time? Uh, I don't have an agenda in front of me, so, or the backup documents, but I did have some questions with regard, uh, Mr. Mayor, too. And I don't know if this, you had mentioned that it's the grass cutting season is fast approaching. And so, I'm wondering, how is that, how, this year, how is grass cutting going to work for the citizens who cut grass, or who have an interest in cutting grass? Or has that been considered? Or where are we with that?
Thank you for the question. So grass cutting will go on, it was a topic that was brought up with the governor, uh, and we spent numerous, we talked about it at length. So grass cutting will go on, if you have a local, uh, person, a person who are interested in cutting grass, ask them to reach out to our service department, service supervisor, Mr. Antonio Marshall, and he will take it from there. I'm not sure who we are with contracting or whatnot, but I know, um, usually around Easter, it starts to rain heavy, and then the end of April is when it sprouts up. So it, it's fast approaching, uh, we're just trying to get ready for it, that's all.
Um, and you also, uh, Mr. Mayor, had mentioned about City Hall being closed, and I see your little gadget there. But I'm concerned about, are we, if, if, are, are our employees coming to work? What is the situation? I mean, are they going to be furloughed? And if they are, are they going to be paid? I'm seriously concerned about that.
So at this point, Council Vice President, no one is being furloughed. And as, uh, we talk, and, and if you remember back to the last council meeting in which we, we put out, or you put out, that it was closed to the public, it was a deterrent to keep people from coming to City Hall, right? So, court, and they have a, a federal mandate to have court. People are entitled to their due process. So the building itself will be open, it will be heavily monitored, because we don't want people walking through the building. As far as employees, we have been working diligently to get the directors to give, or to structure, work-from-home assignments. So there will be people in City Hall. For example, payroll still has to be done. So, different personnel in the finance department will come in to process whatever needs to be processed for payroll, for bills to be paid, right? So me and some of my staff will still be in and out, but residents, please, don't come to City Hall, right? We want City Hall closed as we move into the height of this. I hope that answers your question. There, there are no furloughs, no one's being fired, not at this point, no.
So, so are they working from home, or?
So right now?
Yeah.
People are working from home, people are coming in, so it's been a little bit of both.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Here, uh, Ms. Gowdy's here, she wants to, uh, make sure she's allowed her time to speak, just letting you know.
Yeah, uh.
She, she right on time, uh, Councilwoman Gowdy?
Yes, uh, I had death in my family, and my niece had passed away today. Okay, thank you. Um, when I, um, heard about the newspaper, um, everything is accurate in the newspaper. You can look it up online, and also it's open to the public. Uh, for Brandon King to even make a statement like that, he needed to be really ashamed of himself, because he already know that everything that he's saying is accurate. And I will pursue my legal, you know, when he come after me, I have to come back after him, because I would not stand by and let Brandon King feel like he can do whatever he wanted to. And I have plenty of money to do that. I don't mind spending money where it need to be, especially when it run, when, when things is running into the office the way it's been running. And the court, I feel like shouldn't be open, because it's still bringing in groups of people, and you still getting money, and it's still, you know, if council can't come together, why should the court come together? And there's a lot of people is coming, you know? And, um, another statement that I am making, because I feel like it's necessary, and put it on record, that Brandon King have, um, uh, no one to cut grass. And, it, Treve, Trevel Heart is running the program. He's so far up, connected with him, that he need to do city business. And I feel like he need to start, you know, doing city businesses for our city, and focus on our city. And, uh, far as the parking, about getting money for the, the child reunion to come, I feel like it's okay to get money, but where's the money going? What's the money is going to be for? And is we gonna have a standard, um, credit card machine, so we'll know where the money is going? We have to keep our eyes on the money, no catch, so, you know? And I mean that. And my newspaper will be coming out again this month, and you will see more details, and I'm gonna be more firm with what I'm saying, you know? Because Brandon King should already know what's going on in our city.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Tim Austin?
I appreciate all that he's been doing, making sure we can actually have a.
Tim, we can't hear you.
I appreciate all that's been done to assist us in developing a process by which we can still conduct the business of the city. There's been some discussion about, um, grass cutting in the future, so for those neighborhood groups or those persons that are interested in having their grass maintained by somebody within their, um, local population, if you will, it is important that we reach out to Mr. Marshall as soon as possible, so that if a person need to be earmarked before the season begin, this is the perfect time to do so. So thank you very much, Council Vice President, for bringing that, um, that issue to light. Um, there was some discussion about, um, a newspaper that is accurate, and I think it earmarked me as a property mafia person, and that is an insinuation that, um, I got some property from the land bank, either of the land banks, I have not. The property that I've obtained from the, within the city have been purchased from an individual. And there's more. And there's more to follow on that, so there are some innuendos that is just, that are just as, um, damaging. As the blatant lie that they are trying to perpetuate or develop. So more to follow on the legal matters that are ongoing. Um, so thank you very much for all you do to take care of one another. And thank the mayor for allowing, um, the food bank to be a contributor to our success, so. The next event that comes up, please participate as a volunteer. Or have your needs met based on the resource that could potentially be produced and provided by a collaborative effort between the food bank. And the current administration, so thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, Councilman Austin. To my colleagues. Mr. Mayor, Madam Law Director. I believe our great Finance Director, uh, Charles N. is online. Our great tech guy, without him, none of this would, would be, uh, possible. Of course, our great cameraman and our great clerk, Dr. Guy, who worked so hard for us each and every day. Through the, uh, sunshine and the rain. I want to remind the great people of East Cleveland about the census. Please fill, please fill out your census, um, it is very, very important. And I also want to close by thanking the land bank, the, excuse me, the food bank. Um, the Civic Center, Salvation Army and each and every, uh, one of you. Who helped in any way serve our seniors these past few days. Uh. It is very, very imperative and important that we look out for our youth and our seniors. In this situation, we all know a lot of our seniors just cannot make it out the house. Uh, Tuesday is our next big food giveaway. Again, I really want to thank, because I know a lot of people ask, what are, what are, what, um, what are the elected officials doing? I want to thank each and every one of my colleagues, we have a, uh, we do have a mayor that. Gets out here on the front line to serve our seniors. Uh, it, it, it is a life risking, uh, action that we are taking. Uh, not only for us, but mainly for our seniors by us going to them, because they are in the comfort of their own home and. Safety of their own homes and we are, you know, bringing germs to our seniors by trying to serve them food and hygiene products. And things of that nature. As stated earlier, if you need any help, please call the mayor's office, the council office. Or our individual, uh, uh, phone numbers, please do not hesitate. We will be here for you. Uh, I really want to thank you all that's on this conference call, I know it's very inconvenient. But it's, it's a great necessity that needs to be done to serve the health, inches, rights and needs of the great people of East Cleveland. So with that.
Councilman Smith, before you end.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to let, uh, the public know that the, um, phone, they can still call into the office, that all the phone calls are being forwarded to me. So that no call is missed, so.
Yes, ma'am, uh, Dr. Guy, can you tell the people their direct number, please?
The direct number is two one six six eight one two three one zero, that's the main number. Um, so all that, those numbers and the, and my, my office number is, uh, the other office number is two one six six eight one two three one two. But either one of those numbers are being forwarded to my cell phone.
Thank you, and with that. I would like to entertain the motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
God, please note that I was here, tell it.
Dr. Guy, please note that I was here.
I see you.
I see you too.
Good night, everyone.
Okay, good night.
It's dinner, it's dinner time.
Yep.